Board of Franklin County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones with the leaders and prayer and the pledge.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the ability to be here today, be with us all over today, help us to have good and pertinent discussion, give us discretion and wisdom that we don't have, that we seek today, help us to make the best decisions, not only for today, but for the future of Franklin County, all those who visit, all those who reside here in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be payment of the kind of being.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mastin.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones. When discussing all the favor.
Aye.
All the polls, pass unanimous. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mister Chairman and esteemed county commissioners.
Let me get your name for the record, please.
My name is Deborah Clifford.
Okay.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to voice my strong opposition to the proposal for Mister Langston and the coastline environmental materials to operate a fossil shell in Tates Hill State Forest. I'm coming before you as a business owner and private property owner to say that this proposed mine will affect, impact our business and quality of life. My name is Debbie Clifford. I'm a Franklin County landowner with property on Pine Log Creek, north of Carabel. My property includes about 900 feet of waterfrontage on Pine Log Creek, adjacent to Tates Hill State Forest. I'm a certified green guide and since 2011, a partner in La Lutra Tours, an ecotourism business based on Pine Log Creek. For the past 28-plus years, I have been a naturalist with Gulf Specimen Marine Lab in Panacea, Florida. La Lutra Tours offers very unique specialty electric canoe and kayaking trips into Tates Hill Swamp that showcase this environment and habitat. Our tours are specially geared to those physically and visually impaired. For them to enter into this unique habitat with little or no impact on wildlife is a total sensory experience. Our clients have included people from all over the U.S., as well as Germany, France, Norway, and Canada. We have hosted nationally known filmmakers, writers, and photographers. We have, we are an official rest stop for paddlers traversing the Florida Circumnavigation Kayak Trail that goes from Pensacola to Jacksonville. We have hosted Florida state biologists and foresters from other states into this habitat, and we have, they have documented rare and threatened species of orchids, plants, and flowers. This proposed mine will be less than five miles upstream from La Lutra, and I find it hard to believe that this sensitive ecosystem will not be adversely affected. The proposal states that the mining activity will have, quote, "zero negative impacts on any adjacent wetlands, waterways, and/or tributaries," unquote. A similar nearby quarry operation, the former Langwood Industries, had complaints from neighboring landowners of water well contamination. This proposal by CEM states that they will be using the same process in this mine to contain any industrial wastewater and stormwater. This part of Tates Hill habitat is critical for some of the least studied fish, frogs, and other amphibians that can be directly impacted by water quality degradation and industrial runoff. There is also the matter of noise and ground vibration.
Time up, ma'am.
From trucks, and I do appreciate this, and I hope you will oppose this amendment. Thank you. And I do have copies here if anybody wants copies. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Welcome for this opportunity. My name is Serge Latour. I live on Pine Log Creek. I am also a partner in La Lutra. The purpose of my short presentation here is to discuss the significance of the Pine Log Creek watershed on our bays in Franklin County. This is one of the last pristine waterways we have that extends all the way from the Apalachicola National Forest, down into the wetlands at the top of Pine Log Creek, and then the wetlands flood into Crooked River, which feeds the last remaining clean freshwater we have coming down the river. We can't, we can't rely on the Apalachicola right now. This mine is, this open strip mine is proposed to be at the point where the wetlands of the Apalachicola Forest drain into the headwaters of Pine Log Creek. All right? I understand that the proposal states it's got a zero discharge. I have been in wastewater recycling for 35 years. I understand the systems he wishes to use up there, but this area floods all the time, and none of this equipment works when it's flooded. Pine Log Creek is one of the few remaining pristine watersheds that we have in this county. It's critical to our survival. It's what's keeping that end of the bay alive. We know how important the freshwater is. And one spill over, one flood of that site located where it is, where it is proposed, flows directly down the Crooked River and from there into both bays, depending on the tides and what the conditions are. I, I think that perhaps a new location should be considered, if nothing else, for your mining materials. Pine Log Creek, I had a list of all the recognitions we've gotten with the National Geographic Society and Photoarc. We've been with the National Fish and, Native Fish Associations come down called Species. We've been providing apple snails for the Wakulla Springs, apple snail reinduction program with, with the Florida Water Commission to bring back the limpkins. That little piece of Pine Log Creek watershed as defined in, in the hydraulic study is one of those last few pieces uncontaminated by agricultural or residential runoff. I just hope the commission would take this in consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll give it up.
Good morning. I'm Donna Butterfield.
Oh, no.
Um, I got a piece of paper from the online B O C C documents that you all are going to be dealing with today, okay? And I just want to point out one thing. The report gives a whole paragraph on new construction. A planning meeting was held, architects, clinical staff, and administration. A consultant for the acoustical analysis of the new construction has been retained. And then they go on to say, well, we're going to make everything ready by end of September. My concern is, one, who went to this meeting? Who called it? Who has the authority to sign a contract for new construction business? I thought we were kinda on hold a little bit, but Weems is still hemorrhaging money. And I wish that you all would direct your staff on what they can and cannot do before a final decision is made by this commission on whether we do a standalone ER or a ten-bed rebuild. But this concerns me, and I don't, I'd like you to ask really good questions. Michael Morone has been fantastic about detail, and I'm assuming that when this comes up on the agenda, he will give us the players and what happened and who's doing what. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Chester Butler. I live in Carabelton, Carabel, Florida, I'm sorry. And I want to so that there's no mistake about my position. I am a capitalist first and a naturalist second. But I want to address a couple of issues in this proposal for mining. That proposal is 35 pages long, and I want to draw your attention to two sentences. The first one on page 75 of your agenda that says, "with the understanding that fossilized shell is a superior clutch material for those types of restorations and creation projects." Page 76, the second quote, "The findings contained in the monitoring reports provided by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and the National Resource Damage Assessment found fossilized shell to have the best results." Now, I'm not a scientist. As I told you, I'm a capitalist. So I went to the head of the stream, and you'll find in that report, or in that proposal, a report done by a very well-qualified researcher. So the question becomes, are those two statements that I just read true, or are they false? Are they fact, or are they fiction? Well, according to Ms. Melana Parker, who I spoke with yesterday afternoon, who devised that report, she was somewhat stunned because the conclusion which she came to is not being presented to you today, and she does not understand how they got those particular pages. Now, I figured that out. Nothing illegal about it. But I asked her, I said, "Is fossilized shell the best material to use in the bay?" And this is what she said. My report did not address that all sites, my report did not address that all sites used were fossilized shell. There was no comparison of materials. If there is no comparison of materials, how can one be best or superior? She also went on to say that her conclusion was not in those slides. So I said, "Ma'am, let me see what I heard," because I was in that January meeting when that report was given, and let's see if we're on the same page. What I heard was there are a number of factors causing the oysters to grow to a certain size and then to die. And according to you, you said that you were just at the beginning where you would begin to understand the key causes of oyster mortality, and that we had, or you had, a lot more work to do. As she went on to say, "I can tell you now that what's beginning to be indicated is that location is very important." Now, scientists disagree with one another, so I didn't stop there.
Time up, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. I hope you'll read that carefully and, and vote on whether it's a fact or fiction that you're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Leslie Cox, and the pen is gone to write in. Somebody has the pen?
Sure, that's okay.
Okay, we got another one. I live in Carabel. I have ecotourism, less hassle excursions. I'm a certified green guide, Florida master naturalist, and I participate in wildflower tours on Tates Hill Forest. I also have been a participant on the land management reviews for Tates Hill State Forest two different times. Currently, we have our draft 10-year management plan that's going to be presented to the State Acquisition and Restoration Committee in October. After that, it goes to the Board of Trustees. That's the governor and cabinet sitting as the Board of Trustees for its final approval. So the, the sites too, the management plan are not the, in the proposal, are not the current management plan that's being put forth to the governor and cabinet probably in the next six months. The proposals, there's two proposals that I see. One is for an artificial reef that's to go out beyond St. George Island, a little ways off from sites cut. That rock is going to be sourced from Jefferson County and then trucked to Gulf County and deposited off of Franklin County. I don't really see any problem with that. Hopefully, he can get whatever permits that he needs to do that. They're, I'm assuming, taking the rock from a currently mined location in Jefferson County, but it doesn't really say. The other is a city of Appalachia would be leasing Tates Hill State Forest lands to mine. I'm not sure why that proposition is being put forward, but anyway, and then that, those mining deposits will be reseating the bay, or they'll sell it to Louisiana, or they will use it for road building material in the county and in the forest. So I'm wondering why the lease agreement from the city of Appalachia hasn't been included. I also wonder why there's not support letters from the jurisdictions. It's going to be, the roads will be impacted if they're hauling mined deposits out of the, out of the forest. Not included in the agenda packet are the results from the study that Mister Butler was referring to, and the scientists started with a clean spat block. One month later, the spat block was covered with predators, the sponge, sponges, the drills, and also after one month, they counted 800 drills on that block. So are we going to dig a big hole in the forest and mine out rock and take it out there to the bay so that we can build predators? We can harvest predators out? I don't know. But anyway, the other thing that I want to stress is that there will be impact to the roads, and you all have jurisdiction on the roads. And I want to include this. Let's see, I shouldn't have done this before. I was shaking so bad. I'm just gonna go like this. I'll take your advice and do it now.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And Franklin County citizens, friends, and visitors. My name is DT Simmons, and I'm proud to stand before you today and talk about some of the things that the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is doing. At the department, I am a quality improvement and outreach coordinator, and along with our community health improvement partners, we're in the process of wrapping up our community health assessment. As a matter of fact, next week, I am inviting you all to our final workshop in that assessment hosted at the Department of Health, where we will work with partners to identify our priorities. We'll be doing a priority selection. On that day, we'll be reviewing lots of data that we have been collecting for about nine months or so. In addition to that, we'll be hearing different concerns, needs, and ideas from community and partners on what they believe that this community needs and the best way to go about getting that. Now, I cannot say every single priority that will be reviewed and selected, but what I can say with all certainty and confidence is that access to care will remain a priority as it has been in the past. As a matter of fact, we're currently in the process of working with a health council to get some guidance on how we can go about driving that priority, getting the tools and tips we need to bring that priority to the forefront in our community. In addition to the health council that we are working with, we're also working with our new interim CEO of George Weems Hospital, Mister David Walker. I believe you all know him. He's right there in the back. And in addition to him, we're also working with some other partners as well to figure out how best to enhance access to care, specifically with a focus on sustainability. That meeting will be next week, and I do have some, just a few flyers here, just so you will know what day it's occurring, what time, and so forth. Permission to approach?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Give it to Mike.
So once again, I just want to invite you all to that meeting and let you know we will be selecting our priorities. This will wrap up our assessment. After that, we will be putting out a report, and from there, we'll be going on actions and figuring out how to implement priorities in the community for the coming three years. I encourage you all to attend, but if you can't, we will make sure we get the information to you. There's, that concludes what I have to say to you. So thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Do you have, do you have a minute, Miss?
Ms. Simmons. I'm sorry, we don't normally ask questions now, but just for the general public, can you please tell us the time and date of the meeting?
Yes, the meeting's at 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, the 27th.
Thank you.
At the Department of Health. That is located at 139 12th Street in Apalachicola, Florida.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to speak, Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens, Franklin County. I'm going to speak just a little bit about something a little newer today. Community healthcare crisis, what now? You're aware by now that over the last 12 years, more than $18 million out of the healthcare trust fund has been spent in support of Weems operations, and still the county struggles without a successful and safe healthcare facility of which we can all be proud. Weems has been borrowing from both the operational and capital portions of the sales tax revenue and has been consuming nearly 100% of the healthcare tax, healthcare trust fund tax for operations. Even in the short run, this is unsustainable. There are no existing plans to stop the bleeding. Revenues from Weems will be negatively affected financially by the multi-month process of re-roofing the building, which requires moving into temporary trailers and, and moving into a slower season. The CCFC has reason to believe that this will create the need for another cash infusion, yet no one has been discussing this that we are aware. The single greatest challenge to interim leadership is vision. This also applies to you, Commissioners. Without a major course change, bad things will inevitably continue to happen since there is no mechanism in place to alter course. With the rocks directly ahead, do you plan to stay the course and run aground? So what's next? The CCFC believes that the departure of the sixth CEO in 12 years should mandate, mandate a necessary pause in the direction we've been heading. First, we do urge a freeze on last month's commission decision to spend an additional $221,000 in addition to nearly a million and a half spent on the project so far in the hope that the, at an affordable guaranteed maximum price can be found to build the proposed addition and remodel of Weems. Instead, let us look at some more practical alternatives to serve the 1,550 people who voted 12 years ago for an altogether different pie-in-the-sky full-service hospital as promoted back then, which is and was neither practical nor even on the table today. Commissioners, speak to the citizens of Franklin County. We have experts, both retired and active, community organizers, healthcare professionals, and others that would like to talk and actually be heard by their commissioners on behalf of better healthcare outcomes in Franklin County. We need such a dialogue, currently impossible since your written policy of non-engagement was enacted a couple of years ago. We ask that you please open your minds and your hearts to opinions that may seem different from your own, but in the end, we believe that all of us want the same thing you do, the best healthcare that we can afford. Yes, we can. We are compiling a list of qualified names who will offer to be involved to help you find a more realistic healthcare facility direction. Answers abound and can be seen in other well-publicized community healthcare solutions. We hope you will join us so that we can create new and better options together. The CCFC believes we can raise up to our local, raise our local healthcare game. Commissioners, please consider these possibilities, enhancements, and truths. One, centralize any new facility in East Point where can serve a larger base and better attract and serve individuals from St. George Island and further east. Right-size for a new 24/7 emergency room with observation beds and the latest technology. Most people don't realize that the new Weems will only have their existing dated equipment and technology. New, updated, modern equipment is a must for patient care today. It will save lives. Three, we must live within our means. Weems has forecast, Weems has forecast that it will lose a staggering $2.3 million before subsidies by the end of September, leaving a net cash loss of $944,000. Where will that cash come from? No, we cannot let this money drain continue to happen. Four, we can and must partner with a healthcare system that will put skin in the game instead of the unsuccessful partnerships we've had to date. Five, as we build, staff, and operate a new facility to better serve today's needs, we will bring pride, local jobs, better outcomes, and fiscal sanity back to our healthcare. Last, we suggest that a permanent healthcare partnership be created to incentivize best practices, create more community involvement, and help determine the best solutions for healthcare in Franklin County. This carefully chosen group would actively oversee a new healthcare management structure better representing and serving our citizens. Individuals on this task force would include local and other healthcare professionals in addition to appropriate consumers and successful business people, all of whom would report to the commission. What do you say, Commissioner, Commissioners? After 12 years of operational failures, will you allow the people to speak? More than 18 million has spent, been spent over the last 12 years, and still the county struggles without a successful.
Time up, sir.
And safe healthcare facility of which we can all be proud.
Your time up, sir.
Thank you very much for listening to me this morning. I hope you take it to heart. Would you make this part of the permanent record, please?
Thank you for having me today. My name is Sierra Anderson, and I serve as the Northwest Florida District Director for U.S. Senator Rick Scott. Not coming to you asking for anything, I just want to make sure that you know who I am, and I know who each of you are. I'm here to be an accessible point of contact between your community within Franklin County as well as to the constituents in Senator Scott's office. I am your primary point of contact and oversee all things regarding Senator Scott, so I just want to make sure that we start to build and establish that relationship. Mister Morone has my contact information. I will be happy to meet with each of you at anything that you guys particularly need. And then Megan Myhill is also here as well.
Where y'all?
Sorry, go ahead.
Where y'all located at?
Pardon?
Where your location at?
So I'm our district director within the entire region. I cover Madison, Taylor, onward to Escambia, so I work remotely, and I go wherever I need to be within that particular region.
No, ma'am. What I mean is, where your location at in town?
So we don't have an office because I work remotely.
Oh, okay.
I come to you.
Okay.
And yes, like she said, I'm Megan Myhill. I'm regional director for Congressman Neil Dunn. I'm located in our Tallahassee office. We do have an office in the City Hall, so if we can ever be a resource to you all, please don't hesitate to reach out, and that's about it.
Just for one second, Commissioners. What they're trying, what we're trying to coordinate with both ladies is a roundtable where they can be here for a day, maybe at the Armory, and they can speak to everyone individually, including the constitutional officers, you know, and anyone else in the community leader. So we are working on scheduling that. Hopefully, we can turn that into a regular, bi-monthly thing, every couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Larry Hale. I'm a Franklin County resident, and I'm asking that the county commission get on board with trying to pressure DOT to get us a traffic light there at Highway 65 and 98. It's a very, very dangerous intersection. It's a blind corner to the east. If you're riding in a low slum car, you can't see over the bushes there. I've seen cars run off the end of that road that are unfamiliar with it, come down at night. All you have is some rumble strips that are worn out. You have some reflectors there at the end of the road, but many times, people flying down Highway 98, you're going from a 65 mile an hour speed zone to just a few rumble strips and then the end of the road. We did recently, as you know, had a very terrible traffic accident there recently, and I feel like a caution light could have helped prevent that. In addition, I've been in contact with the DOT for a number, about every, every year for about six years, asking for a traffic light at Island Drive and 98, which is progressively getting worse. We have a new business there with Family Dollar. We also have a very busy restaurant right there. We've had a number of accidents there. The DOT keeps telling me that Franklin County just does not qualify for a traffic light there based on the national model. Well, I told her, I said, "Well, you know, you can't fit a square peg into a round hole. We're a small community. We never will match up to a Tallahassee or a Palm Bowl city in our needs and traffic flow." They generally count the traffic right after labor. They generally count the traffic right after Labor Day. You'll see the strips go up after Labor Day and they'll be counting our traffic. And that's what a lot of our traffic is based on. But we desperately need a traffic light there. I talked with A.J. Smith, our local sheriff, and he's definitely in favor of it. He says it's a desperate need. And I think there is somebody from the Sheriff's Department here to speak to that this morning. But I think the county really needs to get pressure on, on the DOT. And I think we need our national senators, that it's a federal highway. And if they could get behind us, I think we could achieve getting that caution light at 65 and also a traffic light at Island Drive and 98. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Dwayne Coulter. I'm a captain with Franklin County Sheriff's Office. I'm here this morning on behalf of Sheriff Smith. He did speak to Mr. Hale last night in reference to the Highway 65, 98 intersection. I understand that that's, you know, DOT oversees that. He would be in support of a dangerous intersection, signs coming from any direction as far as from the east, the west, or north, you know, running south. Also, right now, we're running a traffic initiative. And through that, we have Lieutenant Ward. He is running that. So, and we've had some really good results. So far, we've wrote about 60 to 70 tickets a week just to show you how much, you know, of a, a traffic issue we have going on. But that's been going really well. We also have a new traffic data device that it collects traffic data. And we would be happy to deploy that anywhere in the county. Uh, the County Commission may, you know, want to see what the numbers are, the true numbers are that are driving up and down our roadways. So, anything we can do at the Sheriff's Office to help, we'd be happy to. You can contact me or the Sheriff anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Commissioners, if we're through with public comments, uh, there was a last-minute conflict, scheduling conflict with your supervisor of election, Heather. So, I'm going to move her to the next meeting on September 3rd. Okay?
Okay. So, she won't be here?
Yes, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda will be Department Director's Report. Mr. Howard Nevers, Superintendent of Public Work.
Good morning Commissioners, how y'all doing? We, we still continue on cutting and maintaining the roads, and which we had a lot of rain the weekend, which had a few calls off with a couple of places that was flooded, a few trees down, but other than that, we're fair good through the rains. Now, like that, everything's going good, so.
Anybody got anything for, for Nevers?
I do got a question, Mr. Chairman. Are we still using the same schedule we had going back to, I guess we talked about it about six months ago for, for the grass cutting with another work, we're usually in Caribelle, Linnell area this week of the month. You know what I mean? Are we still on that?
Yes, we do. We, we, we in East Point on the island this week.
Okay.
So, we're doing that, and we'll be back in the Caribelle, Linnell, and I'll give it a point.
That being consistent was what it's being, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, and hopefully, that stuff will slow down, so, I mean, you take, you cut it two weeks, it's back to high, so. And if, one more question I also had was, I had an inmate supervisor leave which come to the city. So, like the board's approval, rehiring a, another inmate supervisor.
So moved. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masti. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Okay, yeah, but could I like to run it in-house and in the paper at the same time? So, we can go ahead and move forward to try to get somebody hired.
That'll be fun.
Thank you.
I have anything for Howard, but Commissioner, what you said about the grass cutting schedule, would you like me to get that from Howard's department and post it on the website?
I think it would be better, you know what I mean? It's just, I mean, it's, it's fine to be asked questions, but it's another thing to not know the answer. You know what I mean? So, that's what I'm trying to, trying to find out.
Which, I mean, you take a month before you get back to another location, I mean, it's gonna be high.
Yeah.
And you can't get no inmates part-time.
We get two, three a crew, so.
Right.
I think I had two crews this morning, had two, which were short one, and we got two trucks that broke down. So, right now, we ain't even got a truck to, to pick the other crew up, so. Hopefully, we got one truck in Tallahassee. We should be getting that out pretty soon. Then we have one truck that blew it up, so.
Mr. Chairman, was that a truck that we leased that's broken down?
Oh, no, 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 sir. It was one of our older Ford trucks. It was an old Ford model truck that we had for inmate crew.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would that mean your equipment going bad, huh?
Uh, just the trucks, which we got another one ordered that come in, which we got to get the tag and insurance and stuff on it before we could use it.
Okay.
But the, but the trucks we got leased, no, they running strong. So, they good.
Okay. Anybody got anything for, for Mr. Nevers?
Appreciate you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Howard.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Funley Davis, Solid Waste District.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Try not to trouble you alone here. I just have a couple items that, for your information. Uh, in the Animal Control Department, we have been experiencing some rabid animals. We have two foxes, one raccoon at the moment. We got a call last night of a raccoon acting strange, so we're gonna have him tested also. We should have the results back in a couple of days. We just asking that people be aware of the surroundings. Do not come in contact with any animals, stray animals. And for the parking rec, soccer and football registration has begun. So, we getting ready to kick off that season for both soccer and football. The football field in Kendrick Park, we have the coaches asking for scoreboard. We have one out that's, that need repairing, and we are working on it. Well, we got the electronic guy to come out and work on it. We also gonna have to relocate it from one end to the field to the next for, because of sun. But they also wanting a bigger scoreboard. I have not priced it yet, but, uh, just the normal size like we have right now is, is probably about $4,000. So, they're looking at one about the size of, uh, half the size of high school regulation. Uh, I know they've been talking with Commissioner Jones. He may want to speak on that.
Yeah, I can say that they're actually, 'cause I received one for the business, they're actually also soliciting donations from businesses to help get money for the scoreboard. The big, bigger issue is, number one, they do need a good scoreboard. Number two, as far as I understand it, our league has the opportunity to host the Super Bowl this year for all the little league teams. There was the championship games that we played on our field. So, I think that's a good thing, and that, so, that's what I know about it. They're trying to raise money, and they're not just asking the county to foot the bill for it. They are raising money themselves.
How many, uh, how many fields we talking about?
Just one.
Just one.
They just going to use one field?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we only have one, don't we?
Mr. Chairman.
We only have one field, don't we?
Well, we, the new one here in Appalachia.
Oh, okay.
It's a deal, too.
Okay.
Finally, might, might want to check with Danny Collins of Duke Energy. They've been very supportive of the youth in the county. And they would probably make a donation, donation if nothing else. They may purchase that scoreboard for the kids in this community as they do use Kendrick Park as well as Appalachian Airport during storm events and stuff like that. Make a call to Danny Collins and see if we can get some help out of Duke Energy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Fun, I just wanted to encourage as much as appropriate and you can to coordinate with EMS services to have them out there with one of their units and their staff as, as many events as you can.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we got two soccer fields, right? I mean, what field you talking about, soccer?
Uh, we have the soccer slash football over in Caribelle at Kendrick Park.
But we got a soccer field.
Here in Appalachia also, soccer slash football.
Now, how big is that scoreboard out there?
We, we just built that last year. We don't have a scoreboard at this time, Commissioner.
Well, you might as well price two. Ain't no need to give one and come back in 40 years. They gonna need a nothing. So, see, check, check on the price of both of them, if you gonna do it.
Okay. In solid ways, uh, the recycling bins have been placed back at the sites. We do have one truck, the primary truck up and running.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I have for you this morning.
Oh, you talk about that bridge thing? Well, it's funny to hear you want to talk about that bridge, like.
The bridge.
The bridge on-
The DOT.
DOT lights. No, them lights on St. George and, uh, on YTM.
Probably should have brought up more of Howard, to be honest with you, Commissioner.
Oh, that was Howard, huh?
Yeah, should have, uh, let me find it here, my report. Know what it is. DOT has, um, I apologize, my report, I should know where it is, right? It's been that kind of week. Okay, item 10, towards the end of my report, last page. Uh, staff has received complaints regarding the height and thickness of the grass.
No, I ain't talking about the bridge. I'm talking about the, the light.
Number three.
The light on the fishing pier.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Item number 10, I talked about both the, the grass and the lights.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Um, I, I apologize. Let's start again. So, staff has received complaints regarding the height and thickness of the grass, hedge, whatever you want to call it, on the Appalachian causeway and between East Point and Caribelle. Mr. Hale was just referring to that, too. We've also received complaints about the need to replace the overhead lights on the Appalachian Bridge and the lights in the water surrounding the St. George Island, Island Bridge that were damaged during Hurricane Michael. The FDOT contractor has informed me that the shoulder work contract has been awarded. It could start any day now. They call it the shoulder work, but it's the grass cutting is what, what they mean. And from what I understand, because I haven't been across the bridge for the weekend, it started on the causeway already, cleaning up the causeway, so I guess they're moving. However, the contract to replace the lights on or around both bridges is a FEMA-funded Hurricane Michael contract and has not yet been awarded. Hopefully, this will be done within the next 60 days. I've been told that once the contract is awarded, the lights will be replaced rather quickly. So, um, I know anybody, Appalachian Bridge at night, you know, there's about, what, 12, 13 lights out. That's part of that contract on St. George Island. Think it's a depth finder, depth gauge or something. There's a red light or another light there that a lot of people use fishing purposes, just for navigation.
Navigationally, yes.
Yeah, it's, it acts like a navigational light. That's out. That's part of this contract, too. Now, the light that is on the boat ramp, that's a, that's solar light. That's the county. So, Fun and I already talked about that, and we're gonna check the, the person that did the installation of that. He's working on that light or will be, letting us know what, what got damaged and, um, how, what we can do to replace it.
Okay.
I hope I've answered all the light questions.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to be on this so to all the callers, they know we working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. And, um, I, you know, I'm getting updates from our, from Feroville, which is our FDOT con, uh, local contractor. And that's the same ones I was gonna call to talk about replacing the rumble strips there at intersection of 65 and 98. There may be a blinking warning light. I'm gonna give them a call soon as we get through today and see what they say and let you guys know.
Michael.
Sir.
On, on that issue, since we're talking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. On that issue, I, I know what's going on, and I know that we need to try to do something with lights.
Yes, sir.
But I think what you're doing is exactly what we need to do, and that's you get direction from this board, contact DOT and find out what the procedure is for us asking for a light. Because us demanding a light's not really probably gonna work.
Yeah.
I just, you know.
Oh, you mean a traffic light in general?
For, for the stuff that Mr. Hale brought up.
So, in general, any warning lights, traffic lights?
Is there a procedure we can follow as a county? What, what does that look like? Come back and let us know, so we can try to do it right.
All right.
Okay.
Yes, and I want to reemphasize that. With that fatality that happened there-
I will.
Uh, we have a huge history. We have a huge amount of data right now, and now is the proper time to take care of what Commissioner Jones has said. Very appropriate.
Well, you, what we need to do is put it in a motion and send them a letter axing them, not demanding them.
Yes.
Axing them.
I'll make that motion then.
A second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masti and Commissioner Burton. Any more discussion on that? No, you don't, you don't never demand nothing from the state. You better ax them.
You know, like, oh, I know.
If, if you don't, you have a bit of a problem.
Thank you for some clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a phone conference this afternoon with one of the DOT General Counselors. We need to bring this up and ask them if they have any guidance and report back to Mr. Moran about information.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, include that in your motion, I do, I guess. Do that need to be in the motion?
Yep.
No, sir. I'll do it.
All right. All right, y'all ready for, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
Good.
Okay, anything else? Anything else from Mr. Davis? Keep up the good work.
Aye. Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Bernier, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have, um, two action items this morning. The first one being memorandum of agreement between Florida Division of Emergency Management and Franklin County for the use of our Everbridge, which is, which is our mass notification that we use in this county. They, they renewed their contract, so we have to sign a new MOU with them and to be ordered, in order for us to be able to use it.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masti. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
The next thing would be, um, opening the request for proposals for Emergency Management contractual service. And again, that's not anything to do with recovery. It is strictly a consultant for the county for emergency management that we have gotten the breakdown on what the county's looking at as far as Michael Hazard Mitigation Money. It's about $5 million and some change. We've got a lot of LMS projects that, uh, we can take this money and submit. So, that's why we need this, this consultant to sit down and write those projects up and get it submitted to FDM before the deadline.
Please, at the vote.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masti, second by Commissioner Jones.
Okay. Trace, you want to start?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that pass unanimous?
First one is AC Disaster Consulting. They are from Arlington, Texas.
Long way. AC?
Yes, sir. And again, Commissioner, if you remember how we do this, is we actually, there's a committee that will go through. They will score it and then come back with y'all on the recommendation.
Okay.
Pegasus Engineering LLC, Winter Springs, Florida.
What the name was, say that name again, please.
Pegasus.
Pegasus.
Third one is Arcadius. And let's see, where they're from. Tallahassee, Florida. Third one is Arcadius, and let's see, where they're from, Tallahassee, Florida. Uh, Integrated Solutions Consultants, and where are they from? Chicago, Illinois. Atkins, and they are from Tallahassee. Management Experts, they're from Tallahassee.
What was the name of them?
Name of the board?
Management Experts. The last one? DLC, and they're from Tallahassee.
It's like Christmas over.
I know.
Yeah. Really.
Send me on Christmas Day.
I know.
ICF Incorporated LLC, and they're from Fairfax, Virginia.
A motion to, what, to the committee? Who, who reviews the committee?
Uh, the committee will be Tris, Damron, Jeanie Daniels, and Michael and B, be somebody from your office, can't be me.
There's nobody from my office but me, okay.
You got, you got a scoring sheet, it's gonna be pretty simple.
No problem.
I make a motion to turn it over to them.
Yeah, I myself cannot score because one of the vendors, I have a personal relationship with, and I do not want that ever to be brought up, that I anyway sway the decision, strictly the committees.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast.
Say it.
Second by?
Um.
Any more discussion on it? The internet put it, bring them bids in, don't it?
Yes, sir, well, that's all part of, um.
Yeah, name of the game.
New FEMA two hundred regulations, for y'all's information.
Wait a minute, we, we got the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimously, okay, go ahead.
Uh, we found out yesterday that we did get awarded the grant for a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for the Hurricane Loss Mitigation Program, which is the program we've been doing now for three years, that you see that we put shutters on and roofs on houses. City of Appalachian did not apply, City of Carabel did apply and did get funding, so anybody that lives in Carabel that wants to apply for that will have to go through the City of Carabel. We will be advertising it with our applications for people to come in and do their applications for it. We will do the unincorporated areas of the county first before we move into the city, because it is a county grant.
Pam, do we notify the public in the newspaper that this grant is?
Yes, sir, there's a, there's a, we have to do a notification process, and we have applications left over from the previous year that we go through, but again, they have to come in and resummit.
Yeah.
Because your financials is part of this, you have to bring that information in. I've already instructed Tris as far as the unincorporated areas of the county, especially over there on Brownsville Road, there's a lot of homes with blue tarps on their roof, let's knock on that door, let's find out why you still have a blue tarp. And if you're eligible for this mitigation, let's get you an application, let's move forward and see if we can't get some of these blue tarps taken care of in our county.
Okay.
I'd add one thing, if you try and coordinate with lordship, you're not fixing a roof that they might be planning to.
Yeah, we always.
Or you work.
We always do that.
Yeah, you guys work together.
Yes.
Good, cool.
Yeah.
Uh, if I may, Pam, I'll let you say something else, can I read Alan's note that he just sent us a few minutes ago? Alan Pierce, Alan and Frank McCollum's group, they've just submitted two FEMA, a scope of work for rebuilding Alligator Drive in its current location, the estimated cost is, whoa, five point nine million. The scope is consistent with the plans created by Clay Kennedy and Dewberry Engineers, the scope of work will now be reviewed by FEMA. Scope of work and dependencies resulted in a hundred and ninety-five page document, the board will get an electronic copy here shortly, 'cause I just got it in my email, okay? So they, whoa, you don't know this.
That's where that, that's the curb, or they, they weren't able to get that land?
Uh, no, I think there were issues with the purchase of the land.
So they gonna have to be with the curb?
Yes, as far as I know, it's with the curb, right?
The original plan, as I understand it, was to rebuild the road in its current location and configuration with that same sharp right-hand turn as you turn off of Alligator Drive on the Tom Roberts. Uh, as you see in my report, Mr. Norman has declined a land swap, so that intersection will remain as is.
Okay. May I speak? Do, there's a safety issue here.
I agree.
And, um, do we need to have a discussion on how we can approach the safety and well-being of the people there in that area that are making those turns? We already have a history of, I think, one accident in that sharp turn already. Is there anything that we can do to help convince the landowner to work with us in this area?
I hesitate to say I'm much publicly committed.
I understand.
But as you understand, I have put a request out for aid and assistance to the county on this issue, and that is still being developed and processed, I understand.
Okay.
Exactly how, I do not know, but I understand something is afoot, as they may say.
Well, I'll be standing by to facilitate and complement anything we can do with regard to that district and that issue.
Yes.
You told, what did?
Once, I have. I reached out on behalf of the county, on behalf of our district, as the new guy that's just got off the bus and different personality and different approach, and I asked him to consider the, um, some of the semi-curative things we've done already in paving that road, and, uh, just ask him to think about that and to see the energy that we will pledge to work with him in the future, that's where we are. Okay. Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would put out, I, I do agree that there's a safety consideration there, but I'm also very confident that your engineer is going to design an intersection which is safe and appropriate for public use.
Yes.
It may require a reduction in speed limit, but I'm confident that the design will be appropriate.
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I believe it. Okay, we got a vote, right? Did we vote?
Uh, yes, with the last motion unvoted, I have is to send the RFP to the Examination Committee.
Is that correct? Michael came up after that, yeah. Any, you got anything else, Miss Pam?
No, sir.
All right, anybody got anything for Miss Pam? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Lovestream.
Morning Commissioners, you have my written update, and I do not have anything extra for you today.
You gonna give me your names?
Oh, I'm Eric, I thought you mentioned it.
I got to have for you for the record.
I appreciate your article in the paper.
Thank you.
Very good. I'll be looking for Tiger Beatles.
Yes. I've gotten several comments on that one.
That's good.
Okay, anybody else got anything for Mr. Eric? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Jason Puckett, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Jason Puckett, uh, don't have any action items, but I do have a couple quick updates I wanna bring to your attention. Um, as you know, we've been working on the access road development, and bids were received, Roberts and Roberts were actually the lowest bid, and about the same time that, um, we got the bids, the Northwest Florida Water Management District provided, uh, AVCON with their comments from the stormwater permit application. Most of the comments were typical, but they are now requiring the county to provide a cultural resources assessment of the site since the airport was utilized during World War Two. So there have been other projects, the airport permitting through the Northwest Florida Water Management District that did not require this previously, so AVCON has coordinated the work with Alan Pierce and authorized a self consultant to begin the study. Uh, AVCON should be receiving that report very soon, and will coordinate this with the Northwest Florida Management, uh, Water Management District in order to get the permit. Um, AVCON will then coordinate the signed contract with Roberts and Roberts as soon as the permit is issued, hopefully, likely before the end of September, so it's, it's pushed us back a little bit, but hopefully not too long. Um, second is the master plan update at the airport, working paper number one, which was simply the introduction, the inventory of existing conditions and the aviation forecast has been completed and submitted to the county on July third. A copy was also submitted to the FAA and the FDOT for review, and AVCON and the ones working with the master plan update has received the FAA comments, and since then, we're now working on working paper number two, which includes the capacity assessment and the facility requirements. Third is our runway six-two-four, good news, uh, the FDOT issued a grant for eight hundred thousand dollars to complete this work. Um, if you remember, a couple years ago, we did fourteen thirty-two with all LD lighting and underground conduit, we're now doing that for six-two-four. So now our primary and tertiary, uh, primary and secondary runways will all be LD lit, uh, and with underground, with underground cabling and conduit for that. Uh, AVCON's preparing a task order for the county consideration actually this week. And then lastly, uh, the FDOT issued a grant for seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to rehabilitate the concrete apron on the east side. Uh, the goal of this project is to restore the pavement in front of our FBO building and the main areas where aircraft are tied down. Over the last few years, we have been focusing primarily on the runways, uh, and they're now at an acceptable level for us on the concrete, so now we're gonna, you know, dedicate our efforts to concrete rehabilitation around the, around the aircraft tie-down area. Um, and AVCON is also preparing a task order for the county's consideration, and will provide that later this week. Those are the four main updates to the airport.
Anybody got anything else for? Let me ask you a question, what, um, y'all keep up with the traffic flowing, coming in and out?
Yes, sir, A- AVCON, we, we do that as best we can, uh, there, there's some traffic that comes in and, in and out after, after business hours, but AVCON tries to keep as, as, I mean, not AVCON, excuse me, Centric, uh, the FBO operator tries to keep as, as best record that we can.
You talking about all the time, for, why, after hours before doing, working, they keep up with all that?
They, they, they would keep up with that if someone was there at the airport, there are times the airport is operational that there's not anyone there, uh, as during business hours, so there, there will be the ability for someone to fly in and land at two o'clock in the morning, uh, and we, we wouldn't technically know about that. But we, we do, we do try to track as much analytics as we can while we have someone out there to track that.
What happens if they need fuel two o'clock?
If they need fuel, what they'll do is they'll go and they'll call, we have self-service fuel, uh, so they can go get self-serve, and if they want fuel served, then we have an after-hours call-out, and so they'll call the phone number, it'll go to one of Centric's employees, and they will dispatch someone out there to provide fuel, uh, and they will, the customer will pay a, a call-out fee normally for that.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Cool.
So we, we do have, we do have fuel available twenty-four hours a day, self-service, uh, and then if you need service after hours, uh, Centric will provide someone to go out there and, and take care of any kinda, you know, anything at three or four o'clock in the morning if, if need be.
Do they work on, what about mechanics?
Um, there, there is, we do not have mechanic service there now, and that's something that I've been pushing for, for a while, uh, and I know the previous FBO had some light maintenance there, um, as of right now, we do not have, um, an AMP that, that, that works at the airport.
All right, anybody got anything else for? Puckett, Mr. Puckett.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.